Called me into order, I would have a forum, I would take a motion to approve the agenda in a minute, please. Alright, all favor I? Harry, Rich, hey there.
Not much, don't have much to tell you today, still working on some plans for really with more. Don't have any updates on paving one oh five yet, three ninety, the bridge is coming out. They had a breakdown on their. I did ask him though, we've been ordering some guard rail parts and pieces to fix some broken posts and stuff and I asked. Posts and some guardrail stuff. Other than that, I think the 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 plans, primary plans for the the bridge on Killarri over here will create those repair plans are into the DOT review, so. Things are moving, but we got a lot of other stuffs we. At going on too. Small cover projects, we need to get design on, probably won't be a lot of it done this year, but there's a backlog of work we need to get them on, so have been working on, just haven't got. We're plenty busy.
You advertise us helplessly?
Uh, yeah, Russ is back, so I can have him put an advertising out.
Perfect, any else for Rich?
He sent me the permit late Friday. I wanted to go to landfill and pitch and stuff, and so I told him I'd get it there, but I didn't see him at the gas station on Friday too, and he. He forgot that he just grabbed the wrong permit when he did it, I he forgot about it first of all, then he had the wrong Mitchell, he had Mitchell County's permit to us, I said, we got a little different thing going on, so. I'll get his permit issued.
The underground power line I was talking about upstairs, it's it's crossing County Main, so I'd asked him, you know, I called Hartland, I said, what are you doing to locate that main, and.
Well, usually they do it early. Yeah, I didn't think twice and I couldn't find one of them, Mark could call, so they don't have, I'm like, well, that's odd, but.
Thank you, Rich.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Alright, Steve Peterson, first responders, bring in the backup triathlon.
Thank you, uh, just wanna say thank you to supervisors for your support, um, I think I met with you guys in early July. Uh, talked about the triathlon July thirty first. It was, uh, all accounts, it was a successful event. Uh, I think when I spoke to you guys, we had about fifty some registered, ended up getting about seventy-three registered for the event. Whether cooperated, and, uh, yeah, overall, it seemed like a nice event, it's kinda hard to critique your own. Um, event, but from accounts from what I've heard from other people, they really enjoyed it, enjoyed it, and a lot of people said they wanna. Come back next year if we do it, so I I think we're gonna plan on doing it. And then, uh, I also wanna thank Worth County Sheriff's Office, they provided excellent, um, security and. Uh, like roadblocks where riders were riding their bikes through town, and it was very beneficial, I had, I sent out a questionnaire to the. Participants and I got some good feedback on that as well as as far as the amount of, uh, protection they provided on the course. Thank you, Mr. Thompson, uh, he also helped out, uh, with one particular area on the course, uh, that was very beneficial to us. The roads department, I mean, here, thank you very much, I I know you guys did a lot of work on the roads and got them. There were some areas that need to get swept off for rocks and different things like that, cuz. Uh, the riders use kind of a a thinner tire bike and it's easy to pop tires, so it was really important to get that done, and. Thanks very much for that, and Joel Roney here, uh, provided some awesome, uh, uh, drone footage for us, and, uh.
We we have a training.
I'll stay out of that conversation. It was really cool, he gave me a copy of it and I spliced together some pictures and, uh, some footage that he provided and. Make kind of a cut-up video about seven or eight minutes long, and it turned out pretty good. Uh, also, Worth County Conservation provided, uh, in individual that drove kind of a a lead vehicle for the. The rider, either rider or runner in first place, that way people know the person's coming, and it was also very beneficial to the event, so. Really appreciate it. I don't know if you guys have any questions or not, but just wanna say thank you this morning.
I hope you decide to do again next year, it was it was good for the community, you know, seventy-five people running in, way more than seventy-five people for. Things that went on down, I, you know, I think, and some of the restaurants and breweries and stuff provided some incentives for people to visit the shops. So that's good.
Yes, I I talked to a few of them and they were willing to provide a a discount, um, to the participants, so it was, it was very nice, I. I don't know, I think we might have had a hundred and fifty people down in the swimming pool area for the event, um, cuz family members, like you said. And, uh, so, thank you.
Thanks, Steve, it, uh, sounds like you went well.
It did, yeah.
As I'm certain, you're welcome back, we'll, we'll help you next year too.
Thank you.
Drainage, saw some claims, standpoints. Any questions on any of those guys? All favor I? Motion to approve the payroll plans? Another discussion? All favor I? I didn't see any, is there any questions on the claims? All favor I? Motion to approve the sheriff's report? Payroll eligibility, your salary changes? Uh, proposal for the design phase of the geotechnical evaluation, uh, chosen valley testing. Got three bids. With, um, the engineering firm or design team on the courthouse proposal. And Cedar Valley testing was the most. So take a motion to approve, uh, FEH design. To engage with chosen valley testing to geotechnical around the courthouse. Any other discussion? Alright. Worthwhile Wind Project update. Mark Prowell, how you doing this morning?
Good, how are you? Computer screen. Want to look at this. Oh, there it goes. Well, I will go ahead and dive into it here, I've got a, it's a story that. That we put together, which is pretty neat, um, you know, and across my fingers that it worked out as well, uh, as I have a plan here, but. Thanks for letting me come and talk today, first off, I mean, I'll just kinda leave it here and and give an intro of what I'm gonna, really kind of the point of of what this is, and. I I thought it was a really good time to come and just give a full overview of the project, that everything that's been done today. Summary kind of snapshot of of where it, where it is, how it got there, uh, hitting on the main items that you see here, so just like the general. Development slide, site selection approach, through environmental engineering, uh, overview, kinda how we got here. On the layout that we have today, and then look at the development agreement, where we're at, kinda position of the project again, and then looking forward. Uh, to to the future, so with that, I'm gonna go ahead and dive into it, feel free and stop me, you know, if you have any questions. We go along. Okay, so first off, just selecting a a a project, you're pretty much tied to the existing electrical grid. Uh, what you're looking at here is, uh, all the transmission lines for the majority of the state of Iowa, so you're looking for a project area, you gotta find something. That, uh, that that can get the power out to the rest, rest of the grid system. It's really faint, but up there at the top in a blue box, that's the worthwhile wind project boundary, uh, right up there north of. Obviously, north of of Mason City. As as a second pass, you'll look at the wind resource in the state, so, uh, it's, when projects gotta be windy, I don't think it's, uh. Too much of a surprise to anybody here in the room that, you know, this this portion of, uh, the state of Iowa, it's it's definitely very windy, but. You'll look at kinda the transect of where existing infrastructure is, along with what's gonna be a really good one. So anything, and, uh, and that yellowish-red and then green is all, all really good, uh, initial prospects for. Uh, for a wind project. So then going in and doing into the actual project footprint that you see, um, that pink line right there is. It's kinda the the priority portion of the new Lead Yard Colby three forty-five KB line that came through here recently. That, uh, was was really a, you know, a driving factor for why this would be a good location, along with the wind resource, and you can kinda see in there too, that it. It it almost goes from the northwest a little bit down to the southeast, those pockets of yellow are kind of the, uh, the primary. Windy areas when you look at it at this, uh, at this desktop level, and later on, you'll kinda start to see how the project fits in. With that, with that slow curve from kinda Winnebago County on down, um, but overall, the worthwhile wind project has. Everything from just a baseline fundamental project or fundamental area that you look at when you're, when you're looking for. A location to put, put one of these projects. And then, you know, just a a quick snapshot of where we are today, we'll use this and and look at this slide as kind of a baseline later, but this is. Um, this is the participating land layer, so these are the participating agreements, oh, sorry, I'm probably gonna get a bunch of emails during this too. But, uh, be nice, there's like a presenter mode, um, anyway, but this is about thirty thousand acres of land, and that'll serve as kind of a basis for. The rest of the presentation as well, so then you just come into the kinda the conclusion of the high-level development side, you know, the the project area was initially. Selected due to the great resource, the transmission capacity in the area. Um, along with, you know, some strategic location along the Minnesota-Iowa border, uh, that that kinda helps the opportunity, you know. For off-take and for, you know, the the actual, uh, transmission of the energy that the project creates. Along with, you know, having a historically supportive county for these types of projects, make this, uh, really good location to come into. Just a couple of points there on the bottom, you know, we did sign our first agreement at six twenty-nine, twenty-eight games, so that's over three years ago now. Two hundred participating landowners in the project area with with the large majority of those being located in Iowa and Worth County. And already talked about, uh, the the participating acres that we have so far. Okay, so then now it's kinda into the environmental portion, and this will serve as a snapshot for all of the studies that we've done to date. The findings and how that plays into the final footprint that we end up working off of, it's really done in in three batches, the site characterization. Study, raptor nest surveys, and then general avian surveys, and we'll kinda step through those here. So first off, the site characterization study, this was started back in twenty nineteen, uh, it's, it's meant to look at the entire project area. Identify any type of species of concern or any habitat that, um. Critical species, endangered, threatened species would look to use, uh, in the project footprint, so this follows the US Fish and Wildlife. Land-based wind energy guidelines, and so everything you'll see, uh, the next couple of slides follow that, that guidance. We initially start in our internal environmental team will look at. At at this, so this is the National Land Cover Database, it looks at, you know, what the the project footprint, how it's utilized today. Um, so you see, you know, you have have a lot of open farmland with some patches of, you know, more tree or foresty type areas. Uh, across the project footprint. As a, as a very first pass in this portion of the state of Iowa. Uh, those treed or wooded areas have the potential to hold northern longyear bats, and so as a measure of precaution. Uh, without, you know, having to to confirm the presence or absence of those species, we we go ahead and stay back a minimum of one thousand feet. From all of these locations, just in case, uh, you know, there are any of those species here, or, uh, to continue to allow them to be. That type of habitat into the future. In addition, on the site characterization portion of this, we'll look at all federal and state protected areas. Um, you can see kinda, uh, across there, those are the two separate colors of green, those have kind of a higher classification of. Of making sure that we need to look and understand those areas to a greater degree. Additionally, if you look at any type of habitat that is is kinda congregated in forty acres or more. Just as a broad stroke, that provides more of a possibility for it to be, uh, suitable habitat for different types of species. So it's important to look at that as well, and that's what you see in the yellow, so a lot of that is kinda overlaid over the, um, some of those protected areas. Anyway, uh, but it does at least pose a a heightened, uh, a heightened potential habitat for species. As a result of kinda all of these things in this initial review, we stay one mile away, uh, from all of the wildlife management areas. See a mile buffer from, uh, Silver Lake, Elk Creek, all of those things, as well as a thousand feet from. The forty-acre habitat and a half mile from any, um. Uh, publicly available, publicly available data of the US, that's what that PADDAS stands for, those are the. The protected areas, so you can start to see kinda right off the bat, the significant environmental setbacks that we take, just as a a a precaution. And looking at the project area. In addition, and that kinda casts a, i- it does exactly kinda what the name is, it it characterizes the site and looks at it. In in a little bit more detail, but what we wanna do is continue to take that and refine it based on characteristics that you might see in this project area. So next, we look for any type of, uh, raptor nest and and eagle nest in the project area, so this was done in twenty nineteen. And it's currently being done again for the second year, uh, of the study, given the project's advanced significantly since then. But it's really meant to, uh, look for any type of raptor species, and specifically look for any type of. Uh, of of eagle nest in the area, so there are a couple, uh, in and around the project area, what you see in the red. Is an active eagle nest, then what you see in that yellow there on the southern border of the project, that's one that was there in twenty nineteen. And when we came back to do the field review in twenty twenty-one, it had been abandoned, so now we only have one active nest. Inside of the project area. And given that, you know, this is a, obviously something that we need to pay extreme attention to, we kinda went an additional step. And did eagle fly path monitoring, so we looked at these given areas, um, and had some trained folks go out and look at how the eagles. Were utilizing the project footprint, so that we could better site turbines, uh, that would be minimally impactful to. How they're using the area, and, you know, it makes a lot of sense, right, they kinda stayed around those protected areas, that's that's the reason why they are protected there. And they kinda use, um, use, you know, Creek Silver Lake and kinda take off and and, uh, stay out of the large majority of. Our project footprint, I think this is really unique and and just, you know, really insightful as to the level that we look at. Um, for every aspect of having a that a truly well-vetted project.
Sorry, Mark. Did you, uh, on that side of the floors that sticks to the aircraft? Airport runways, basically, you know, there is one just west of Northwood that's not on this map.
Yeah, so that one is, yes, I do.
Okay, just wanted to make sure you know about that one. Cuz I mean, it's it's been there for five or six years, but I know I'm almost positive it's actually slated as a certified airport rest. What's this line right here?
That's a eagle fly path. All those kinda squiggly lines up and around here where the.
So this eagle's getting out this far.
Yeah, it's kinda.
That's why over here, Riley, I've seen him three times since June or July. So he gets, he gets way over here too, then.
Yeah, you know, or maybe it's these up outside the project footprint, that would be a likelihood as well.
Yeah, cuz that's quite a ways away from Silver Lake. And that's, I've seen him quite often, he's getting my cats.
So then, the the next next aspect, the next aspect of this, uh, is the Avian Use Survey. So, well, this is a multi-year survey, it started in twenty nineteen, ran through twenty twenty, we're doing it again in twenty twenty-one. Uh, this is to look at a a full and complete list of all the avian species in the area, and identify different areas of project, and kinda how they're used. In this footprint, so what you see here is a person from a a team that we hired. Will actually go out throughout a full year, go to all of these different areas and look for any type of different species, all the birds, log everything that they see. And then, in addition to that, along the minutes that they can be seen, so we could start to see what portions of the project area are used more heavily than other portions. Think again, kind of a recurring theme on the environmental side, is a lot of the activity is localized in those protected areas. Uh, with less kinda seen in the the middle or larger portions of the project footprint, but a big takeaway here. Is that there's no federally threatened or endangered species, um, that have been observed here in in the project area. So then. And yeah, that's our our baseline for the participating land, and we'll have a summary here, so then you put all that together. Uh, in a visual. Okay, so you put all that together in a visual, you overlay it over our participating land layer there, you see, just from an environmental perspective, following. Uh, the process that the IDNR outlines, as well as the US Fish and Wildlife Service, we already have a substantial reduction in the usable footprint for the project. In following those guidelines, and so this is, uh, what it looks like when you just apply the environmental setbacks to our, uh, our our land. So just as a conclusion, uh, this was the result of multiple years of study, following US Fish and Wildlife, uh, land-based energy guidelines. As well as, uh, consultations with the Iowa DNR, and we've taken, uh, as as really as much of a proactive. And conservative approach as we can from an environmental spec- perspective, to make sure that this is a project, uh, that. That is is very well-vetted, uh, so little setback overview there, and didn't wanna point out, you know, we consulted with the Iowa DNR. Twenty nineteen and recently in twenty twenty-one, the Iowa DNR didn't express any concerns with the approach that we've taken, the inverter, he does a good job on the environmental side. And make sure that, uh, we go above and beyond what is necessarily required, and, uh, it's it's. Generally a low environmentally risky project, this is TBD, when I put this together, we had been scheduling about meeting. With, uh, Worth County Conservation, that will happen, it's just been a little bit of, uh, back and forth on the scheduling front, I'm gonna give the same presentation. We gave to the Iowa DNR, get additional feedback on that as well.
One question, do you have a dollar, not you spent on environmental studies?
Oh, I can find it, um, it's, it'll be pretty substantial, I mean, it'll just off the cuff, it'll be at least. Five hundred thousand or more.
If you could get me a number, that'd be fantastic. And then all of your, all of the findings that you found on that, are they, do they match the DNR studies of what they find when they do their surveys on a lot of that stuff?
Yeah, so the DNR will kind of, they they don't necessarily come in and do, um. Like, you know, the specific of this project area, the layout of footprint, kind of a path for us to follow to study the area. So that's why we'll kinda meet with them earlier on in the project footprint, say, hey, these are the things that we're looking to do, do you agree, what else would you like us to do? And then do what we did this past year, summarize the findings, see where we're at, see if they have any additional suggestions, and we've done, you know, just that. So it does follow, um, the the process and procedure that the Iowa DNR lays out. And in addition to that too, we have that with the US Fish and Wildlife Service each and every year, just to make sure that the approaches that we're taking. Um, what we're looking at is the latest and greatest that, you know, the US Fish and Wildlife Service, uh, provides as well. So then, you know, the environmental stuff is definitely interesting, I think the engineering portion of this, it's extremely interesting, uh, it gets a little, it gets a little, uh. You know, you'll you'll see here in a second, but but I think this is an extremely telling portion of the project, but this is what we're gonna go over, uh, there on the other side. In the next couple of slides. So this is starting with our project footprint and all possible turbine locations for the project, and so. This is kind of how it ends up, and then we'll kinda walk through over the next handful of slides of how we get to this as being potential locations. Again, thirty thousand acres is where we start. We go through and we'll put in local road setbacks to stay away from. Going as well, and we'll add in highway setbacks in the project area. We look at microwave paths and communication towers to make sure that those will continue to function, our, uh. Our turbine placement won't interfere with those. Look at setbacks from existing projects. Setbacks from non-participating property lines. Residential setbacks across the project area. And then, because there's a handful of others, we put additional miscellaneous setbacks for, you know, transmission lines, pipelines, all all sorts of things. So when you come to, when you apply, um. The engineering setbacks, and this is obviously a pretty, uh, a pretty substantial list of imposed requirements that we have. To to responsibly side our project. Then you layer on the setbacks that we have as well, from the environmental. Then you layer on the setbacks that we have as well from the environmental side. And you start out with thirty thousand acres of land and you end up with about seventeen hundred acres that are now of the potential. To even decide it. So that's at a at a kind of uh baseline level. For how we've approached the project, a combination of things of eternal guidelines, environmental guidelines, and. Um you know, distances discussed in working through the development agreement. So that is actually not the final piece to this either. You continue to um. Got to have myself a little bit. You continue to go through. And as part of the negotiation of the development agreement, there have been additional design standards imposed on the project. So you come in and then on top of everything that was there previously, you add in a fifty decimal noise standard that we have. So the project was studied to make sure that all of these locations are going to be uh fifty decimals or less. To a neighboring residence. Uh we've, this project is fully compliant with that. And it's important, you know, that not only in the development agreement we have, we do this pre-study, but we also. Uh can do a post-instruction confirmation study of this. These are very. Um conservative estimates that we put on this, and so we have a project that's fully compliant uh with that noise standard. And additionally, we go through, and again, as a product of the development agreement, the design standards that we talked about. Uh the project is fully compliant with thirty hours of flicker or less per year, with the large majority of. Uh residences would be anticipating to receive uh little to no flicker at all throughout the project life and. Thirty hours a year is ninety nine point seven percent of the year is is nothing uh on on a residence. Again, that would be. That point three percent would be a a maximum uh a maximum number there. And so then that's how you get to this layout here. And it's not on this slide, but when you then add in the. The noise standards, the 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 flicker standards, you end up with about seven hundred acres from thirty thousand acres of potential land. You end up with roughly seven hundred acres of just potential area to be able to put a given turbine location. That's not even including, you know, geotech needing to go out, make sure that the ground can. Uh you know, can hold these sites, looking at just accessways, different parcels to make sure that how we would get into a given turbine location is going to be minimally impactful. And I think that that was just hopefully just really telling about the process that we go through and about how protective this set of standards can be for. The project area overall, just with the sheer amount of setback distance we take from everything, a a really full encompassing. Approach. Uh. This layout does reflect all the possible locations, but um you know, the the final project area would be would be less than what was shown to on that uh. On that slide. So.
You sorry, on the on the setbacks for the residences that you had on your map, you put those in based on the sixteen. Or what the development agreement of fifteen hundred feet, right?
Yes, sir.
Just want to double check that.
So and then actually, what what is a recurring theme on this and throughout the design is we have fifteen hundred feet as a minimum. But the layout that we have, there's no residence that's closer uh than sixteen hundred feet, just what how we've designed. The project so far, we always will strive to do better, as well as, you know, with the flicker standard and the noise standard too. Uh there's not a a turbine in that layout that has, that's that's close to fifty. They're all. The the highest levels are around forty five, which is very quiet. And then again, you would see that continue to kind of come down as well, because that's studied on a project with all the potential turbines. You're going to lose a little bit of that multiplying effect on the final footprint when you only have what's what's actually needed. And then going into to the development overview, we're going to kind of bring all of that full circle here to, you know, where we're at now and where we're going uh into the future, but. I'm gonna gonna come through and and I promise to finish this up here pretty. Pretty quickly. Uh but I do think it's important to at least touch on the economic benefit. These numbers are. Um you know, are are, you know, rough projections for the project overall, but the the main thing that that I. At 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 least want to point out and bring up is that, you know, the benefit from a dollar perspective of the project is something that can benefit all of the residents of Worth County. Not just those that participate in the project. Uh but it is, you know, a significant revenue stream for for folks that end up participating and all of the good that can come with that. But. Uh you know, this is a project that can be used and and perceived as a benefit and in multiple ways. Now, to the development agreement, which is kind of the, you know, the 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 whole point of of putting this together and. Really what I wanted to do is just kind of talk about. Now we've got an understanding of project and kind of how it's gotten to this point and then talk through. Where we are in the development agreement and what what brought us to this place. So. There were some issues that, you know, have been uh, you know, well documented and discussed with supervisors, folks in this room about some of the things that we're seeing in the Deer Creek project. And issues and concerns that arose out of those. So that kicked us off into um. A a process when the moratorium was was put in place of, you know, on one hand, going down and looking at uh the county zoning and buffing that up. And then also going down in development agreement route that would govern the worthwhile wind project only and specifically. To me, whenever I looked at this, is that we do share the same the same value and main goal, right? We want to make sure. That the worthwhile project is going to be something that is the best one to date, learn from things that the county. Um you know, saw as issues and concerns from the other projects. And agreed to workable guidelines and a set of standards that don't prohibit the development of this project, but also do protect the neighbors, protect the folks. Uh in and around this project area. So looking at it, I I thought it's important to just kind of talk through. The original issues that we saw and then how we had that solution in the worthwhile development agreement. So first off. You know, Deer Creek, whenever that project was going through, there was more of a um. There there was more of a consolidated type of opposition or folks that were particularly concerned in the project footprint. And I'm not saying that. Every single person in the project footprint of worthwhile, you know, is a is a staunch supporter, but there is not that type of coordinated oppositional. Uh group in the footprint. The folks that are typically talking about the project reside outside. Uh of the project area, and I think that's extremely important. The neighbor concerns, you know, we talked about um, you know, making sure and looking at this through the lens of a non-participating residence. If you, you know, this numbers um. Is, I think is extremely impactful. When you look, if you just take a mile around every. Every potential turbine that we show, the average residential setback is thirty one hundred feet. So again, the minimum and the development agreement's fifteen hundred. Uh we don't have one that's closer than sixteen hundred feet. The average is thirty one hundred feet, which is well within a a comfort level. Uh for the process that would follow. Additionally, been talked to many times and meeting with. Uh you know, with folks in this room about sound concerns and how those turbines might be a little loud. Well. Here, that's not going to happen on the worthwhile project because we agreed to uh stringent sound standard. And like I mentioned earlier, not only agreed to that on the design front, but agreed to go out and do a post-construction study to prove that. Setbacks, we've already talked about that. And then as if, you know, that's not um if if that enough right there. Um you know, wasn't kind of enough to to cover the initial set of concerns. We also included language about, you know, road use, decommissioning, restoration. Something that I think is is hopefully really eye-opening, you know, for the 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 supervisors, folks in this room about agreeing to to look at the least impactful locations first. Uh and and trying to come out with that community-based approach that the project has, putting that in writing. As well as looking at termination and assignment provisions that would, you know, bring this agreement along uh with the project overall. So. It's our really approach at the original issues that were spoken about for the Deer Creek project have been addressed today. In the development agreement and we have a a layout in a project that really shows a mutual. A mutual process between, you know, a a developer, but also wanting to be extremely cognizant of uh. Of perspectives here in the county and non-participating residents as well. Just for, you know, just I I think it's really important too to look at that batch of protections compared with existing projects in the state of Iowa. So this has counties that have existing projects and ordinances. You can see there, you know, Cusworth County is is the one that's omitted from this list, but still noted that that. Uh was over there on the side. You know, you have, in in my opinion, and what can be verified is, you know, a very. Protective set of standards. In addition, you look at it from any way that you can slice this, this is a a workable, but very protective um. Document for the project and gets at, you know, what uh supervisors here looked at initially when. Looking at that temporary moratorium. It was, you know, hey, we want to make sure that a project is going to. To take in the non-participating residents, take in their concerns, but not be anti-wind. And not be against this project. I just wanted to make sure that there was going to be that communication um through time. And so that really kind of brings us to this final portion of of the project and, you know. Just that to summarize that worthwhile wind is a is a good project up until um some of the. The concerns and things that had happened from uh a neighboring project, there there weren't a lot of concerns around this area. Uh it's going to bring, potentially bring a lot of jobs, economic development, a lot of things that all of Worth County can can benefit from. And this development agreement and where we're at provides. A very protective set of standards. So we've gone through this process over the past couple of months to get to a point that delivers on the core goal of what this whole thing set out to do. Um and now, you know, we're at a point where for the project, it's fully designed, it's studied. Um you know, and on one hand, you know, we're, this is essentially a a request for action. But I also know that there you'll have a, you know, legal representation reviewing this now. So. You know, with that, I can stop and, you know, have any questions or comments or anything on it. I also have uh Brett Dublinsky came as well here today. Who is our outside counsel for the project to talk about our vested rights, as well as, you know, any type of interaction that we may have with. You know, your uh your selected firm and we can kind of. Take it from there. But I thought it was really important to talk about all of this and talk about what the product was. Of the past couple of months. And I think some of that's that's really good and that, you know, I'm certainly proud of to have been a part of, and I hope that the supervisors feel that way as well. Also, I get a little long with it, so.
Um. Do you, I mean, do you think? We're going the right direction? Collectively together on this? You honestly think you think that?
With the development agreement and the project? Absolutely. Um yeah, I mean, that's why. One, you've seen the communication between you and I and folks in this room over the past couple of months. Um yeah, I wholeheartedly believe this is, this is the path forward because. It delivers on everything that initially was contemplated in a way that's that's protective. But not prohibiting wind and in kind of a different way or with these abstract terms. It's something that, you know. Gives those protections with with still, as you can see, thirty thousand acres down to about seven hundred or so. I mean, there's nothing more that we can do as a project uh to to show a willingness to to listen. So absolutely.
So you you can then respect and give us our time to let our hired attorney do look, I mean, he's got all this stuff, he's been looking it over. He's going to get back to us on it.
Hmm.
Um without. Pushing any further on litigation or anything like that.
Um yeah, you you all have a timeline on, you know, when when an anticipated kind of review and comment would come back. Um because this is the gay eye of now for the project. Everything's everything's ready. It's it's, you know, would would potentially be ready to go through. Uh you know, permitting process and just. Yeah, I know that we talked initially about. This not necessarily holding up the project, and I want to be respectful of the county, certainly, but you know, the project does have a timeline as well.
Let me jump in mainly, I'm just here because, you know, Mark occasionally gets in trouble and he's got a lawyer handy, so that's. Um and and frankly, he took most of what I was going to say uh along that presentation anyway. Let me just jump in here for a second. Brett Dublinsky from Frederickson and Byron. Uh I'm in the Des Moines office. We're based out of Minneapolis, so you guys are right in the heart of where we do a lot of work. We do a lot of this. Uh I always hate to mention in front of one client that I actually do have other clients, but uh. Uh we've done a lot of these developments around the state. We represent uh the developer in the Hardin County case. I think, you know, one of the big takeaways here is that with all these studies done, this is largely shovel-ready. Uh and as you all know, with the. Trying to work on the development agreement uh for for quite some time. And 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 to your question supervisor, we. Uh you are we going the right direction? I I certainly think so. We found this to be a pretty good solution. As you might imagine, uh this happens periodically that, you know, we've got a lot invested and have a lot of the decisions that sort of narrow the path. Um and then a county either wants to introduce an ordinance or uh significantly amend an ordinance. And we've had a pretty good lot saying, well. You know, let's talk out a development agreement that, you know, sort of recognizes uh. You know, the fact that we've already sort of come down this path a long ways, but still gives you as much as we possibly can, right? And so, uh you know, a lot of this, we have a drafted market call, says in the, you know, in the county. And they'd like to see this and we can do this and we get creative and try and get you some language back on that. And uh yes, we've been trying to work with that. We think we've given uh everything that you guys have asked for to date. Um I do understand that you guys have brought in outside counsel. I assume that when uh we were doing introductions and and Will introduced himself, that that's Will Reasoner at Dickinson Law. Uh where I used to work, actually. Um and so before Will was there, actually, but uh. You know, there are ways that we can work with with Will and his team at Dickinson. We're happy to do that. Uh you know, sort of kick some things around, whatever moves this ahead in the most efficient way. I think we're willing to uh to try and help out.
Well, this is Will Reasoner. Can I jump in?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I board. What I think the the best path forward. Um just in terms of the immediate future, uh thank you um Invenergy for the presentation. It was informative for me. I apologize if the board has already heard all this information, but it was certainly informative for me. I think the best path forward, I'm going to reach out to Mr. Dublinsky and bug him on his uh trip back down to Des Moines. Um he's going to answer a few questions for me, hopefully. Then I'll get back in touch uh with you folks. Um and we can. We can do kind of a question and answer and I can give you my thoughts on um what I heard today and try to. Figure out what direction you guys want to take and I can let you guys know what to do there. I don't think that anybody's in a position to make any decision today. Um but I I think the best thing for me to do is get some more information and then I'll be back in touch and we can try to figure out a time uh to discuss. Um and I think that that's the best way to get the ball rolling here, okay?
Sounds good, Doug. Thank you, Will. Um. So, yeah, you guys have any questions for the marker, Brett?
No, I'm just supposed to come up with them.
Yep, well, we'll let our attorney do his thing and and start to talk with you on questions he may have that we can cannot answer or should or shouldn't answer.
You've basically written with development agreement. You went off of our discussion with Deer Creek and the problems there. And we have talked, every time I've talked to you, Mark, three times I've talked to you, it's setback. You're going. A hundred and thirty-one feet taller and you're going from a two point eight megahertz to a four point two. Do we have enough setback? You know, your presentation that you originally started here set a minimum setback for worthwhile wind project was two thousand feet. I have no problem with fifteen hundred foot setback for the people that are landowners in the project. But the landowners that are non-participating need a bigger setback. We need to protect those people. We can't have happen in Deer Creek again. We're not going down that same road.
Well, I mean, I hope that when you looked at the, you know, the slide. I mean, I hope that when you looked at the, you know, the slide of the comparison between Deer Creek and now, you see that that's not going to happen on this project. So whether it's, you know, the setback distance or a combination of setback noise and a flicker standard. You got exactly what you're looking for and I don't think there needs to be.
Well, I don't think there should be a flicker. I don't think there would be thirty hours of flicker for non participating landowners. I think there would be zero. You're not in the program. You're not getting paid anything for it. Why should you have to put up with it at all? Does that make sense?
Sure. I mean, that's it's absolutely your perspective as well. Um, you know, I can point you to. I just said a handful of of resources that, you know, what we put that together as it looks at, you know, what what workable standards are. And you and I have talked at length about just the size of the turbine doesn't doesn't increase the type of impact, the out, the output.
But we don't know that for a fact because there is none of them.
There, so there are.
They're V one fifties.
Potentially.
Where are they at?
Uh, I'll I'll have to look and find ones that are installed so far, but I mean.
There wasn't an eighteen. There wasn't any of them in eighteen stalled.
In twenty eighteen?
Yeah, when they had that meeting down at Kansas, because I asked two land managers, I said, where can I go look at these? They said, there's none in the United States. You know, you told me the closest thing in the past were the ones in St. Ansgar and those are V one thirty-sixes.
Yeah.
They're small.
Very close.
We got to make sure that we don't go down the same road we went with Deer Creek. You know, even if you've only got six to ten people upset. You still got six to ten residential homeowners that it's not good for.
Sure.
And whether it's one or a hundred, it shouldn't matter. We're here to protect the citizens. We want this thing done right.
Uh, and I hope that you see over the past couple of months, that's what we've led up to is trying to do. This right and make it the best project overall. And I think that that whole presentation points to that that's exactly it. The fact that that's how we're looking for this project and it's out of any, out of any possible way to approach this. You know, myself, worthwhile when I come here, done everything we can to address those concerns.
But you won't move off that fifteen hundred feet, even though you're at sixteen something now, you know.
Uh, I mean, I think part of the problem is when you look at the map that shows all of the overlays and actually there are two. Because they wouldn't all fit on one map or you get the one with all the overlays and the one with the sound and flicker down to about seven hundred acres left. Even small additional changes in the sizes of those setbacks now will basically like you can see from the the slide. Wipes out all buildable space.
And I, and I picked that up off of there.
And there's, and there's just not a lot of wiggle room left without killing the project. And, you know, with millions of dollars already in the project.
But with non participating landowners, shouldn't they be protected? They're not getting a dime out of it.
And, you know, there are a lot of developments that happens, whether it's, you know, a a new large building. If any industrial manufacturer comes in that changes things a little bit at some distance, right? I mean. For the economy to keep developing, there will always be some incremental change that. Uh, is some imposition to somebody that's not directly benefiting from it. We've tried to minimize that here. We've tried to do. Uh, to have standards that protect your folks better than frankly, most other counties are protected. Um, but at some point, you know, that next increment wipes the project out entirely. We're trying to do strike that balance. Where we can give you as much of that protection as you want without killing the project.
And I understand that. I'm just saying that whether, if you wreck one citizen's home on the country, it's not good. You just don't have right. They, I mean, they spent twenty, thirty years paying for whether it's an acreage, a small farm or a farmer in general. They have vested rights in that thing. They've got years. They've made mortgage payments every month. And now you come in and put something too close to them and they can't even sleep at night.
So that's, I mean, but again, that, I mean, that's not going to happen with the. Yeah, I mean, like.
It's hard to tell because you don't have these things in the United States.
So you can look at the profile, you know, of of the actual turbine itself and and and, you know, look at. Different sound profiles or whatever it may be, you know, to know what what that projection would look like.
And we'll do after the fact sound measures.
Exactly. And so again, you know, we're not, we're not shying away from, you know, from this and trying to be extremely. Restrictive, you know, on ourselves and we're willing to go, you know, if this continues to move forward. Have it and prove it that that's not going to happen. So the idea that these. Non participating residents would be wrecked or, you know, the property value destroyed or whatever it may be is not the case because of. In large part, the process and communication that we've had over the past couple of months to make sure that there is. This, this kind of best in class set of standards really. And so, um. That's been a direct result of negotiations, you know, very spirited conversations between you and I and, you know, and others here and. Um, you can see like we've, we've done everything that we can. It stacks up with with all sorts of. Uh, things and all sorts of steps and standards in Iowa, United States, all over the place and something that, you know. I think Worth County can be really proud of as a um, you know, the right mix.
Mr. Dublinsky?
Yes, sir.
Uh, doesn't Invenergy typically um buy easements um from? We can call them non participating, but as soon as they'd have an easement, they'd participate, but there's no turbine on their land, but there's a flicker on their land or there's. Noise on their land. Does Invenergy typically do easements for that sound and flicker?
No, um, and I can let Mark talk that if he'd like to. Generally, the protection there is, you know, the standards, right, the thirty hours of fifty decimals. But we generally do not do easements for non participating landowners. And that's a stand, standard industry, right? I I don't know that you're going to find uh any and certainly not many developers that. Uh, and and of course, as you know, they would become a participant uh if they say we've got a terminological issue, but. But generally for folks that are not posting on their parcel, uh, nobody is is entering easements for that.
And I'm not suggesting that you need to is, I'm just wondering if uh if that's something that you guys have explored in terms of what? What the cost would be there? Would that be cost prohibitive for you? Um, would that solve some concerns of? Um, some of the board in terms of uh non hosting um neighbors. I I don't know if that's something that you guys are even able to look into and I I hear you when you say that's not typical. I understand. Um, but I guess some information on what it might take um to do that if if necessary. Maybe that, maybe that helps move the ball forward. I don't know.
Uh, Will, do you have my cell phone number?
I do.
Thank you for bringing that up, Will, because my neighbor a month ago asked me, because he talked to Buck Hardy in the fall of twenty eighteen. Buck said that anybody that was within a windmill area that could hear it would get twenty five hundred dollars. I take it that was just from what I've heard now, that was Buck was blown smoke again.
Yeah.
And we've run into that before, Mark. We've discussed that.
Yeah, that's not accurate.
That's not accurate.
I can't.
Just like his one mile setback from the windmill, everybody in that would get fifty-three dollars an acre and everybody else is kicked out of the program. We've already been down that road, haven't we?
Yeah, I can't comment on on uh.
But he was your land agent.
He was a representative of the project at the time.
Which represents Invenergy.
Was, was.
Was, yeah. Just because you got rid of him doesn't mean you don't have to own up for what he did.
No, no, but but there, there was some accountability there. Absolutely.
That was a big problem out here in Deer Creek, right? That was the land agent.
Okay, do you have any other questions for Will? Will, do you have any other questions at all?
Not at this time. I I am going to give Mr. Dublinsky a call at some point. We'll discuss. Um, and obviously board, I'm, 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 excuse me, I'm gathering information and I'll come back to you because. Uh, as you know, I'm, I I'm not the decision maker here. You three are. So I'll gather information, answer as many questions as I can. Um, and then um, then I'll, I'll go back and we'll, we'll make some progress there. Just know that in the meantime, I'm gathering information. I'm, I'm not making any decisions um or anything there, okay? Thanks all.
Thank you. Yeah, you guys have anything else? Nope, I'll always look forward to talking to Will and we'll try and move things forward that way.
Good seeing you, Mark, and nice meeting you.
Yeah, pleasure to get up here.
Yeah, thank you for the time.
Thank you, guys.
Still in Denver?
I'm newly in Denver, yeah, a couple of weeks.
How could you leave Tulsa?
I know, I feel, I feel like I'm in train my, my hometown.
It's as soon as you're stepping on.
A little bit.
Uh, next on the agenda is Jeff Glorwal, the zoning commission. Let's discuss the county comprehensive development plan. Hi, Jeff.
Uh, so I I do have a handout of giving the supervisors uh done the prepared statement here. Um, so just as a matter of introduction, so the the purpose of this is just to give you guys a review of what the zoning commission has done with regard to. Review on a comprehensive development plan that the county has. Uh, Iowa law section three, three, five establishes a requirement that for a county to have land use ordinances. The county must first have a comprehensive plan. Uh, Worth County last approved such a comprehensive plan in two thousand and six. Title Worth County Comprehensive Development Plan. Um, that plan was approved by the Board of Supervisors. In two thousand and six, uh, was basically structured in three parts. The first part essentially establishes the state of the county. Uh, with regard to the then current state of physical land features, demographics, economy, county services, land use across the county. Uh, and then it focuses on future land use guidance by establishing land use goals for the county. And then strategies that are to be used across county government to accomplish those goals. That's essentially the structure of that plan. Um, Iowa law section three, three, five point eight point two, uh, along with the county zoning ordinance. Uh, and the county comprehensive development plan itself, um, each requires a regular review of the plan. And tasks the county zoning commission with performing such a review and developing recommendations for updates to the board supervisors. And pursuant to that guidance, the zoning commissioners uh individually reviewed the plan during the month of July. And we met August fourth, last Wednesday evening to discuss the review of that plan that each of the commissioners did. Um, the commission found no evidence of any updates to the plan since its original adoption in two thousand and six. Though the plan itself calls for an annual review. That's something that we'll address going forward, making certain that the zoning commission. Does review the plan on an annual basis. Uh, the consensus of the commissioners was that the goals and the strategies laid out in the plan. Are likely generally still applicable, but due to the long period since they were originally established. The goals and account, the goals and the strategies to accomplish and the deserve to be more closely evaluated. And over the past fifteen years, the state of the county has changed since the plan was originally developed. Uh, for example, the plan provided data on existing facts at the time and then provided predictions. Uh, and projections for things like population changes, economic issues, land use predictions and and other things. And a cursory review of those predictions against what has actually happened over the past fifteen years. Um, shows that many of those projections were not accurate. Uh, and that the state of the county certainly has an impact on the development goals for the county, along with the strategies to accomplish those goals. So in short, the plan is due for a comprehensive update. Uh, the recommendations from the zoning commission. It asked me to uh propose a basic structure for a four pronged approach for a deep review and update to the plan. Now, the details for each of these things need to be worked out yet. Um, but the four steps that we've, we've uh come up with subsequent to to your approval of our approach. Uh, is number one, engage with uh NICOG to develop updates to the section dealing with the current state of the county. Bring that stuff back up to the date. Uh, we know there's a variety of things in there that that are no longer accurate as far as this is the state of the county. Uh, secondly, uh, we believe we need to conduct an exercise to grade the accomplishment of the goals that were established in two thousand and six. Presumably, the goals in the plan were the primary purpose of the plan, so understanding which goals were accomplished and which were not. Will help provide critical information on proposed updates to the plan. Uh, as well as understanding how well the county did on each goal will help us to evaluate. The strategies laid out in the plan and how well those strategies work so that we can determine if changes to those strategies are warranted. Uh, step number three, understanding the results of the things that I've I've just described as far as. Grading the goals and evaluating the strategies, uh, work with broad county involvement for validation and or updates. To the land use goals for the county. And then number four, based on those goals. Uh, and the information gleaned from our grading and review of the strategies. Uh, the commission can then create recommendation for updates to the section dedicated to strategies. To help guide the accomplishment of those updated goals that were developed with broad county, uh, broad county involvement. That's our belief that step one and two, which is working with NICOG to update the current state of the county. And number two, evaluating the the goals. Um, we believe those two things can be worked on concurrently. And today we're seeking approval from the supervisors to contact NICOG and engage them in the work described in that step number one. For step number two, grading the accomplishment of the goals. We believe that interview or survey of persons that were originally involved in the development of the goals. And survey of various county government entities and the public would provide us a reasonable method to determine how well the county has done. The past fifteen years towards those goals. But we think we can work on progress on step one and two at the same time. We believe that steps two and four or two through four are stepwise, so we have to take those one step at a time. And we've had some cursory discussion on how we might go about accomplishing grading the goals and and getting the broad county involvement. On validating and updating goals, but we'd like thoughts from the supervisors on uh on how you think we should accomplish those steps. Uh, our intent is to decide on the details for those things on our September first meeting. We're meeting on a monthly basis now for this. Um, with that, I'll hand you this, you can see what our steps one, two, three and four uh we're all about. And. Now, just open uh for comment from you folks and ask about your thoughts on us contacting NICOG. To start work on getting the part one of the plan up to date.
I know I had talked to him about the actual zoning issue, but I'd never talked to him about the the comprehensive plan portion with NICOG, so I don't know.
Yeah, and they had recommended as part of their review of our draft uh wind ordinance, their recommendation. So when they reviewed the wind ordinance, they said, yep, we don't think, we don't see any issues with that, but we do recommend you take a look at the county county comprehensive development. Plan and and bring that up to date just because of its age.
Sure.
And that's not on the agenda.
No.
The actual action of.
Yeah. Right, right, yeah, we can.
Oh, to, for, for a little work. Okay.
So we'll have to just flip this over and.
Okay.
And then we can discuss and take possible action on it next week.
Okay.
Something that's going to require.
Every year the way it sounds, I guess.
Right, yeah, we're supposed to review it.
I thought it was scheduled every five years, but.
Yeah, well, the.
Way we haven't done it.
Yeah, yeah, e- even if, you know, our, our um. The plan itself says it's supposed to be reviewed on an annual basis. Um, the county zoning ordinance and the state law just says regular reviews, even if a regular review is every five years for.
However, we would place it into the plan of when we're going to review it.
Yeah.
Put that number in there. Well, yeah, like I said, we're not the only ones that.
I guess we just need to add that to next week's agenda.
So if you have questions or comments on the four step approach that we've laid out or thoughts on. How we might go about um work on steps, particularly steps two and three? Again, our, our thought on grading, how well the county has, has um. Accomplished the goals that were laid out in the plan. Um, we thought reaching out to the people that actually were involved in developing those goals. Surveying them, uh, surveying county officials, because the, 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 the plan really is for the county. Uh, it it directs the county departments to use the plan in their decision making process. Um, so certainly those county officials, I think, should be involved in in determining how well have we done towards those goals.
Through economic development, possibly, I mean.
They can help participate.
For help participate, sure. I'm sure they were originally a part of it.
Yeah, I'm sure they were um.
A whole.
Yeah, they, they were actually formed as a result. The Winworth Baco, the, the plan specifically talks about forming that organization for the economic. Aspect of the the plan. Uh, but keep in mind, the plan is really, when it talks about goals, it's land use. It's comprehensive plan for land use in the county. Now, in as much as what that land use or certain parts of the land. Uh, in the county uh is is related to economic development, um, that's a part of. uh, is, is related to economic development, um, that's a part of why Winworth Betteco was, was formed.
I think getting back in touch with the people that did it in two thousand and six would be a good idea to get direction from them as to where we went.
Yeah, our, our thought was that, you know, the, the goals are stated, and I believe they're relatively clearly stated in the plan. Um, but certainly people that were involved in the development of them, you know, they, they've got more institutional knowledge of, you know, what were, what were these goals really intended to.
There's a reason behind that.
Exactly, yeah.
Reason behind them, they, they built it the way they did.
Yep, yeah, and then asking county, um, you know, county entities, um, you know, the, you folks and you folks, um, you know, how well the county has done against those goals, that's kind of grading yourself. And then reaching out to the county at large, uh, whether it be a, a random sample survey or something of that nature. Uh, but, but getting feedback from the, the, the county at large as to how well we've accomplished those goals. That, that, that was our, our main approach on how we thought we might grade them.
Sure.
That we may find that there's, you know, where we, we get three completely different perspectives on how well we've done against the goals. Which should be informative in itself.
Sure.
And as a reminder, the Worth County Comprehensive Plan is on our website. Under plan, yeah, under planning and zoning.
So anybody.
It's in the document center.
Yep.
And that'll help you, because that'd be interesting. If you gather people to, to be a part of the survey or part of whatever, then you can just go back and read it anytime you want.
Yep.
Send out ten, maybe a piece of paper, so.
Yep, yep. So that would be, you know, that, that's kind of our thought on, on grading the goals. Um, and then we had a very, uh, uh, brief but broad discussion on well, how do we go about number three? So once, once we've determined, you know, once we've got the results of grading the goals and we know what the strategies were, um, the next step, the step number three, is really validating or updating those goals. Part of the review process is to provide updates to the plan if they're necessary. And so there may be goals that were accomplished in the plan that are a once and done kind of a thing. Those can be removed, or there are goals that, um, they're, they're more directional than they are objectively achievable, um, that, that may need to be tweaked, or there may be new goals that, that should be added. And our thought was, uh, immediately that, well, that needs to be a very broad conversation across the county on, on validating and, and updating those goals. And so we, again, like your thoughts on what would you suggest? What are your thoughts on how we would go about accomplishing, uh, number three? Because again, our intent on September first is to dive into the details of how we would go about accomplishing these activities, the processes.
Right, right. Yeah, the ability to reach out and talk to people is a challenge in itself, but then, yeah.
Right, so for example, the, the plan that was approved in two thousand and six, um, that, that was a, a, a precursor to the zoning ordinance. And so it wasn't the zoning commission that did it. In fact, the zoning commission was formed as a result of the plan. And so one question would be, well, the plan tasks the zoning commission with the review and recommendations to the supervisors. But because of this large fifteen-year period since it was originally approved and now, um, and the need to, to do a deeper review and update, um, would it be appropriate for the zoning commission, um, to set up a separate subcommittee of the zoning commission or a couple of members of the zoning commission with members from every township? Do we engage the trustees from each of the townships? Uh, you know, how, how do we, how do we go about, um, the process of a, a group of people looking at what's been done through step one, step two, and then validating and, and updating the goals and then putting those out. Anything that we do is gonna go out to, you know, from a, a, a public hearing perspective, uh, eventually, but somebody's gotta put the stuff together. Somebody's gotta do that initial work.
Right.
And since it was a, a, you know, a, a comprehensive body, it is a comprehensive county-wide development plan. Um, what are your thoughts on, on how we engage that?
Trustees would be a good start. I mean, they've been willing to step up and.
Well.
They said yes. I mean, it's good, they do, they're willing, they have been willing to participate at least at that level.
And there's, there's a lot of the trustees that I know and worked with, a lot of longevity of living in this county and being around forever, so some of them might even have a part of it before, you know, might have some knowledge to it, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's on the front.
So, I mean, that, I think that'd be a great outlet.
I think the trustees would be fantastic to use.
Yep, I hate to throw something at them, but I mean, some, a couple of meetings with them, you, you'd get a lot of knowledge out of them and how.
I think most of them.
What has happened over the last twenty years, so.
Daryl would, Daryl would not be probably, I don't know, he's still around now.
Yeah, there, there's a few that are gone.
But the, uh.
Yeah, Ken's gone, Dennis is.
James.
But yeah, these trustees would be a great actor, uh, source for.
We thought about. Yeah, we thought about trustees as well, we just didn't know if, if they would be appropriate, you know, just looking at what the trustees duties are. It seemed to be more fiduciary-related and, and fiduciary and, and fence matters. Um, but, you know, recognizing that there are already people that have responsibility within the townships. Uh, presumably they have knowledge, uh, of what's going on in the townships. So we thought, uh, that might be a, a potential ready group of people for us to work with.
Yeah, no, definitely, I agree with that.
Might be a good time to feel on those trustees.
Yeah.
Like, I thought you said summary.
No, this was a list.
This is the list of people that developed the plan.
Oh, I saw you looking at trustee.
Trustees usually if somebody dies, get somebody to appoint somebody, and so.
We have more trouble with township clerks.
And the other thing too is we, we anticipated that being able to get a hold of the trustees would be relatively straightforward and Jackie's office. Contact information, so.
Yep. To get you a list of everybody that's involved, so. But, yeah, let, um, just let us flip this over and then we can, uh, put on the agenda next week to, like I said, maybe take possible action on. Uh, have a NICOG assistance with this a little bit, okay? And then, uh, yeah, we'll just have to figure out a way to come up with step number two, but like say three would be the trickier one, I guess, but if we use the trustees as part of that, would be good. And then four, that would be, uh, elect us and.
Right.
See what's, what the consensus was throughout the county, so.
Yep.
But.
There's a list of the trustees on the election website.
Okay, thank you.
If anybody wants to look for.
Good.
Sure. And you can get to it on our website.
You get to that election website from county website.
Yeah, you go, I want to, and then you go to vote. And then you're there. And then you go to elected officials in township.
Yeah, perfect. If you have any other questions for Jeff?
No.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Yep.
Yep, thank you, Will, appreciate it. We'll be, uh, going to hear from you, so thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Okay. Next, uh, who's left? Winworth Betteco, Melissa on there still?
You bet.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Uh, busy week this week, I diggs coming up, um, and so I might be meeting with them. The time is unknown, but you know, um, they've extended the invitation to you. We're just probably gonna meet at the top of Iowa tomorrow. Um, once I know the time, I'll let you know. If you're able to make it, you're more than welcome to come. Um, and then Wednesday I have a disaster recovery meeting. Um, it's a four-county region. I work with, uh, Mark on that. And, um, the website is up and they are taking donations now via the website if anybody is interested. Um, and I'll, I'll, uh, make it a competition for the first person to donate ten bucks. Just to get our PayPal going up, up and going. Um, I received a revolving loan fund application, so I should be able to send that out to the committee within the next week once the rest of their information has come. Uh, and then I have a rural Iowa summit meeting about the catalyst grant next week, so I'll be gone Wednesday through Friday.
Good, you are busy, so. Okay, and I, uh, I had reached out to Department West. Um, I did talk to Scott, and he's supposed to be getting me something back, hopefully first part of this week. So, once I receive that, I'll start pushing that out to everybody to.
Okay.
Support authority side, so. Melissa, what time's that meeting tomorrow?
That is unknown. They think eight o'clock in the morning, but they haven't gotten back to me. I should know by the end of day today. I can, I'll just send you a message and let you know.
Gotcha. I have a P for C meeting from one to two in Mason tomorrow, too, so.
I'm thinking it'll be in the early morning, because I have a ten o'clock and one o'clock tomorrow, so. Hopefully, eight AM will work, and I think he's there today. He's just spending, or, yeah, spending the night in, in one of the hotels out there, so. It'll be a meeting, and we'll be meeting with WCTA Harlem Power.
Sounds good. Anything else for Melissa? Thanks, enjoy running this week.
Yeah.
Uh, people service, I don't believe we have anything. Um, Jason's, we're trying to bring us our water tower inspection stuff next week, so. Uh, Burke rescue plan, just, just leave that on there, because our committee's meeting today, right? There's nothing, though. The money's on its way, that's all I can say, or some of it is, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Seven and some bad ones.
Uh, department head discussion.
Man. I might as well, I get a long one.
That's fine.
Um, one thing with the State Essex Radio Project being complete statewide and being on the Board of Directors. One thing we talked about is doing radio audits, starting to come out and make sure that um, individuals that are on are following through with that. So Marilyn and I did an internal audit with ours. Um, I took on the whole county with the fire departments and that. We are lacking in a few things, so it'll be an email sent out as far as from fire departments or other entities on documentation of their twenty hours training every year on the radio system and on documentation of new employees having their certification training, which aren't getting to us, so we can put in the file. So that is a couple of things that'll be coming. I know Public Health has radios, County Roads, so you'll probably get a letter also that, that stuff has to be done and we have to have it on file. Um, Joe brought up, uh, we may be getting another logger person on Chickasaw County is interested, so that would be, is up to five now.
Yes.
So, that's a nice little avenue, keeping that logger going and being the host on that is coming out to be a, a big thing for us. We do, Delbert with the jail inspection will be here on the nineteenth to do his walkthrough. Um, I think it's one o'clock in the afternoon. If any of you guys wanna stop in and meet Delbert or look at anything, he will be here.
No, I haven't.
If you could do it.
What day was this?
The nineteenth at one PM next Thursday.
I think I have that one available.
I have not met him, but.
I enjoyed his tour three years ago or four years ago. He really pointed out some things that make sense where you need to be looking at doing something eventually, so.
What time is that?
One PM.
If it works out for both, we have that on the agenda if we were, just in case. I'm not, I'm obviously saying anything, but I'll try to. Next Thursday.
And the last thing I have, I just checked on our vehicles. They are scheduled to be built the first week of September, so probably won't be seeing them until October, so we're pushed back another month, but with what's going on with vehicles and that, it doesn't surprise me any.
You're lucky you're getting them that quick.
What are you looking to do?
Uh, there are, you know, two Tahos and then Palah, and then our black Tahoe.
Oh, the black one's gone?
Not until.
The staples? Staple, what you want?
Right.
Those are the last of the Chevys?
Thank God.
Well, we'll have that discussion later.
You mean the Findon rug beds up there?
Yeah.
Yeah, their bad signal is Ford to come and bail them out.
Is that why you got all the good radios? So that you could get it?
That's all I have.
Uh, Winworth Betteco has, Melissa has her hand up. Melissa?
Is she waving?
I forgot to, uh, mention that Friday is CBN. It'll be the first time that we'll be in person in over a year. Um, and it's kind of like a shark tank for businesses looking to locate elsewhere. I know Kenny always enjoys coming. It's in St. Paul at a golf course. It is an all-day event, so I'm just extending the invitation to you as members of the board, my board.
On that day, sorry.
You're fine.
In, in Wisconsin, I believe.
That's this Friday, you said?
Well, I won't be far away, yes, this Friday.
Thank you. Any other department heads?
Yeah, the, uh, I know Joel sent out an email, the, uh, crisis track training, the eighteenth. Um, I haven't heard anybody respond back yet, but we plan on coming to that. Um, it'd be beneficial if we had some department heads to come to the internal users training, that's gonna be from like three thirty to five thirty that day. And then, anybody that's gonna be doing field type assessments and stuff like that. I'm actually going out looking at damages to roads, to bridges, to structures, that, that training's gonna be from six till eight.
Last afternoon, I mean.
Yep, and then, uh, administrator type people.
Mm-hmm.
One to three.
So which one are we supposed to be at?
Which one would be best? Probably for like you, Jack, would be the, the three thirty to five thirty.
I will be going that day, then.
And also, if anybody's interested, there's a, I don't remember the date yet, but I stood, sent an email out, the department heads as far as uh, four-hour class for public information officer awareness. If there's any possibilities of you having to speak to the media, it's a good thing. If you've had some public information training, it's a good refresher, and if you haven't, um, it's a good introduction. Um, this, this company, the state is contracted to do that. I've sat through some of the training before. It's Eileen Wickstead. She used to be a news anchor, so she knows the angles that they come from and and she teaches you how to give a good news, uh, press conference. And after watching her training and stuff like that, you can pick out a few bad ones, so.
What was the date on that again?
I'd have to.
Do we have a designated person that's supposed to talk to the press?
P I O that we appointed was Jeff Reed.
That's true.
Yep, so.
That sounds good to me. That's the last one. Uh, Deldo, Jesse, you have your own P I O, right, in the public health? Is that Shanna?
Um, it's, yeah, or Jill.
I prefer Jill.
There might be some extra in there.
Who's the sheriff's office, though?
Me and Jesse.
Okay, alright. Uh, Jake left a chat on here, says they're about done with tax bill in their office, so. Those are the people paying, right? Okay, any other department heads? Supervisor, you know, nothing this week, it's all next. Or no, nothing last week, it's all this week.
There you go.
How are you, Mark?
Uh, I did have a public health meeting on Friday, along with North Island Juvenile Attention, as it was, get down with public. Most public health must get done, jumped on North Island Juvenile Attention, just general meetings, um. Also had to help the sheriff track down owners to cows this Monday. I don't know if they did find them or not, but.
We did, they're good.
Four miles away.
Yeah, and, uh.
We're gonna pay for prop damage?
Uh, well, I think it was all work on a constipation, I think, actually. I did also, I'll thank, I don't think Jim's back from vacation yet, but I sent Jim a text about clipping out there at the casino, if you guys pay attention, it's all pretty well clipped off, it's pretty nice. It's turned out okay, I guess. They were able to plug it or patch it or whatever, it'll be, it'll be okay.
Oh.
One more, so, um, we do need to get rid of those straw logs out there if we can. I don't know what we need to do to get rid of them, but.
He, oh, he, he asked you, they haven't gotten rid of those?
Couple of me, yeah, I, I, a couple of them.
I'll send him a message right now.
Yeah. I don't know, we just pull them out, you burn. I don't know, we just pull them out, you burn them, what you do, you know, you gotta be good and dry, right?
I think they use wood posts a little.
Yeah, there's.
That's why they put.
But if they stay in that.
Because he could have done a little better, I mean, he had finished up the ditches a little better, but it looks really nice out there. As a casino did call and say, hey, you know, it's a little shaggy out there, so. He had it all nice and low, it looks like a long out there, he did a real super.
Yeah. And then, I think Mike's been out there, right, said.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike is great, that was the thing, he, he, Jake and more called, just, you know, I think it was like around their, their building, yeah. You know, plus they gave us the land and it was pretty uneven and shaggy, and now it looks, you know, sure we're going out there and we're whacking around everything else. It looks really nice, so.
Now you need a big sign.
Yes, we do need a sign out there.
Or two.
Yep. Get something figured out on that.
I think Melissa was actually working on, into that, yeah. Because we were probably just trying to through.
Just give a, you know, picture of the lot.
Yeah, trying to get a large enough sign where you can see the lots, how it's laid out, basically just like any development. But I, I'm pretty sure Melissa wasn't gonna start working on that, so.
Like, what was it, River Oaks or whatever, on B twenty?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah, they got one.
But hopefully it goes better.
Well, I don't know, yeah, that's.
Dana. Um, I didn't have any last week either, so. Okay. You've got us down for possibly the jail inspection.
Yep.
Training is September twenty eighth. For the public.
I'll have to play that one by you.
So more than one, you wanna do that?
Very interesting, that's what I tried to, I tried to avoid.
What was the time again?
Um.
Eight, told me. Eight, till noon.
Yeah.
So I'm just gonna have it on the, at the ULC, just instead of everybody registering their own, they can just come here.
There, you got a projector.
Yeah.
Also try, I can't make that one, so. Okay, um, I guess we've got our agenda fulfilled, so if nothing else, I think we're still here.
I'll second it.
All the way right.
Hi.
All right, meeting's adjourned, thanks, everybody.